Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the Board of Trustees for the San Angelo Independent School District. This is our regular meeting. We have a pre-agenda meeting each month also, and that was last week. I want you to not only welcome those that are here, but welcome those that are watching the recording of this meeting online on our public access channel, suddenly Channel 4. We appreciate the interest that all of you have in our students. All items that we will be discussing at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. As I just mentioned, many of you may be aware that our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if not all of our items on our agenda this evening were previously discussed at our pre-agenda meeting workshop last Monday. As member of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, prior to taking any votes on an agenda item, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. Also, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wish to speak on our board team on an item not on our agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please fill out one of the forms in the back or over here on the side if you would wish to speak on an agenda, an issue not on our agenda, and again, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Also, please understand if you're speaking on an item not on our agenda, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recording and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I'll also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones now. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. With that said, I would like to now invite Josh Powell, the Music Minister at First Baptist Church, to come forward and give us our invocation.
As a father who has three kids that are new to San Angelo schools this year, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. Oftentimes, it's a very thankless job, but I do want to say thank you. Let's pray together. Father God, we honor you for who you are and what you have done. You are the Creator of the universe who holds all things in your hand. You have knit each one of us together, and you know the number of hairs on our heads. There is nowhere we can go that you are not, for you are always with us, Lord. I thank you now for the people in this room who have dedicated themselves to the well-being of the children of San Angelo. This evening, I pray that you would guide them, that you would grant them wisdom and unity as they face the problems of the day. Lord, help each of us to remember that each and every child is created in your image, that each child is a bearer of the Imago Dei. Help each of us to love the least of these, to care for them, to shepherd them into the future. Lord, we pray for thriving schools filled with happy children and excited teachers. Help those in this room to take the best steps to accomplish that aim. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Josh Powell. Appreciate you being here. All right, at this time, and it's, we've missed our elementary children through the summer, we have some Fannin Elementary students with us today, and as I call your name, please come forward, and they're going to lead us in our pledges. Jade Wilkie, Caitlin Provenzano, Olivia Tello, Alexis Barron. If all of you, would you please rise while we have our pledges to the United States flag and the Texas flag? All right, guys, you just turn around right here. One of you start each pledge, okay?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, guys. The parents, you can come forward if you want to take the photos of your kids. Just turn around right there and, your parents are going to come up and take pictures. Thank you, Fannin. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Whitney Wood and Molly Turk for some recognitions.
I'm actually going to turn it over to our Director of Fine Arts and Advanced Academics for our recognition for this evening. Our desk recognition will be moved to October, so we will be celebrating one of the ways that our students are smart. Ms. Heebner?
Hello. Good evening. All right, well, students, when I call you, I just want to go ahead and give them some instructions. When I call your name, could you please stand up here along this circle pattern, just stay up here as we call names, okay? So, it's exciting to honor a special group of Central High School students this evening who demonstrate all the ways our students are smart. This particular group of students have demonstrated academic achievement and outstanding performance on college board administered exams, such as the PSAT, the SAT, and advanced placement exams. Here tonight, students have received either an AP Scholar Award or a National Recognition Award, or both. AP Scholar Awards are given in three categories. An AP Scholar, that award is granted to students who receive a three or higher on three or more AP exams. Guys, AP exams are not easy, all right? They're long, lots of studying goes into it. An AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams they've taken, and scores a three or higher on four or more of these exams. An AP Scholar with Distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores a three or higher on five or more of these exams. The college award also has four national recognition programs in which students must have a 3.5 or higher GPA, and they must have scored in the top 10% of a PSAT exam, or scored three or higher on an AP exam. These four national recognition programs are this: We have a National African-American Recognition Program, National Hispanic Recognition Program, National Indigenous Recognition Program, and a National Rural and Small Town Recognition Program. We don't have anyone from a rural or small town that's not in our district, so that one will not be recognized tonight. So, students, we are very, and board, we are very pleased to announce the following Central High School honorees. Meshay Allen, he has the National African-American Recognition Award. Sidney Bobholtz, I hope I said your name right, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Fallon Denalfo, AP Scholar Award. Anna Dusek, AP Scholar with Distinction. Stephanie Espinoza, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Mia Flores, AP Scholar Award and National Hispanic Recognition Award. Miguel Flores Acton, AP Scholar with Distinction. I love that you all are clapping for every one of them, because this is a lot. They work really hard for this and deserve every bit of your recognition. Patrick Fuentes, AP Scholar and Award, with honors. Naveya Hernandez, AP Scholar Award. Tanya Jackson, National African-American Recognition Award. Camilla Lane, AP Scholar with Distinction. I want to go ahead and start doing a curve. It might pull. Thank you. Kojo Larvy, National African-American Recognition Award. Paula Masonet, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Amanda McKay, AP Scholar with Honors. Jack McLaughlin, AP Scholar with Distinction. Vanise Mahia, AP Scholar and National Hispanic Recognition Award. Ashton Murray, AP Scholar Award. McKinley Nile, National Indigenous Award. Lauren Ochoa, AP Scholar Award. Benjamin Puel, National Hispanic and African-American Recognition Award. Isabella Royer, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Terrence Sider, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Patrick Smith, AP Scholar with Distinction. Creed Thompson, AP Scholar Award. Francesca Untalan, AP Scholar with Distinction. Alyssa Villarreal, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Emily Wilcox, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Candace York, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Students, we are very proud of you. We know that this requires a lot of work and perseverance, and we love celebrating how our students are smart. We're very proud of you. And if you'll gather up together, I believe Dr. Detloff would like to take a picture with everybody.
Any parents that are not up, that want to come up front to take photos, come on up. And students, be sure you stay where you are until all of the parents have a chance
Let's do one more round of applause for those amazing, outstanding students. And President Parker, members of board, that concludes this evening's portion of recognitions.
The other item on recognitions is not going to handle that tonight. That's right.
Yes, the desk recognition has been moved to October.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. I am with the agenda item now to consider appointment of a board member to an at-large position. As you're well aware, at last Monday's pre-agenda meeting, we had a resignation by Mr. Lanny Layman after serving 20 years on the Board of Trustees for San Angelo ISD. And there's many things into consideration into the replacement of that position and what goes into that, the options that go into that consideration, and so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Parker, that you can go over those considerations and options.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. And before I go into our options, I just wanted to say, because we weren't on, weren't being recorded last week, and it wasn't something that will be broadcast, it was that Mr. Layman resigned, so we're, Dr. McFarland said, as many of you know, or all of you know, many of you may not have known that. So, Lanny was, is going to really be missed by our board. When he went off as president a year or so ago, I unofficially appointed him, or officially appointed him, our, what appointed?
President Emeritus.
President Emeritus, because we were going to be depending on his knowledge and his many years of experience to continue to help us, and now we're, he's kind of setting us free, and we're going to be on our own. Lanny's been a blessing not only to our board and our admin staff and our district, but to our, to all the San Angelo community. When he was elected over 20 years ago, some of you might remember, there was a lot of turmoil and dissension with our board. There was a huge lack of trust in our community with the SAISD Board and School District and Administration. There was parent organizations that were petitioning the school administration for Freedom of Information Acts, just trying to get information about our financial condition. There were headlines in the newspaper that there were $3 or $4 million that was missing and not accounted for. There was a huge lack of trust by the San Angelo community with SAISD. Lanny was elected, and over time, he's helped turn that completely around, where I think that our SAISD Board is well-respected in the community now. Lanny recruited me to be a member of the board 18 years ago, and we've become great friends since then. He is an honorable man, honorable father, husband, has high Christian values, and has been a great mentor to me. As I said, he will be missed. Now, as Dr. McFarland says, we have, the situation now is we have three options. We can leave his board seat open, and there'll be an election for next May, or we can call a special election and go to the expense of having an election for the special election, then for the other board members, a election in May, or we can appoint someone to be on our board now, and that person, if they elect to, can run for the seat that will be voted on in May. So, with that said, I think our board team has understood this. We said last week to be thinking on what route we wanted to take, and I will ask board members if anyone has a motion on which route they would prefer we go.
So, I will take, lead on that as far as a motion. As Max said last week, Lanny, Layman did submit his resignation to our board. He served over 20 years on our board team, and many of those as board president. He served as a steady voice advocating for all children in our district, our staff, and our community. His demeanor, wisdom, and kind heart will be missed on our board team, as he has exemplified servant leadership, and his mentorship has helped grow many of us as board members. We will be celebrating him in coming weeks, and he is obviously a tough act to follow. But as I feel, and I believe our board feels, we, there are many important decisions in front of us between now and next May, and having a seventh board member whose voice and vote, with a voice and vote, is important. With that in mind, I would like to now make a motion for Pam Duncan to fill the at-large seat. Pam and her husband Mark have raised two daughters in SAISD. She has spent 29 years in education as a teacher, instructional coach, and education supervisor. In our district, she has worked at Glenn, Lincoln, Central on Oaks, Central Main Campus, and Lakeview High School. She has been a supervisor over secondary education at West Texas Boys Ranch, and prior to living in San Angelo, she taught at the elementary level. She continues to tutor students in our district and has worked to meet with each of our current board members. She has worked her entire career to create better opportunities for her students, and she values the need to have support structures and trusting partnerships that positively impact student engagement and outcomes. I believe she will add excellent insight and perspective as our district faces the ever-changing landscape of public education. So, with all that, I make a motion for Pam Duncan to fill the at-large seat for the duration of the current term.
Second? Are we up? We have a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Mr. Gallegos, that we appoint Pam Duncan to fill the seat of Lanny Layman until May of 2023, and then if she decides to run for election, or, and if she's, then we will determine then on whether, who will be the seating in that district from May 23 forward. I don't know if there's any other board comment by others, but I have some comments. I've known Ms. Duncan, and that's the way I met her 20 years ago, as she was the teacher for one of my children at Glenn Middle School. And since then, I've gotten to know her better and know her family, and I think she's top-notch and will be an excellent board member. This is a very critical time with our school district and school districts all across the country, because we have a teacher shortage, and it's very important that we recruit and retain teachers. And I think to have an opportunity on our board, to have someone who's been a teacher for over 20 years and in our district, and is well-known by the teachers in our district, that I think this will be a strong positive, because it really gives our teachers maybe someone they trust to communicate with and communicate their ideas with, so that hopefully we'll be able to do a better job of recruiting and retaining teachers. So, I think this is a, she's, at this particular time especially, it's a great time for Pam Duncan to become a member of our board, and I will support this motion that's been made. Is there any other comments by any other board members? And by the way, I failed to mention that Amy Mizell Flynn, our board member, is out of town this week, so she's not here. If no other board comment, is there any public comment? If not, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Come on down, Pam Duncan. And Dr. McFarland, I'll ask you to lead us through the process.
Yes, sir. There's a three-step process. You've already taken step one, to name an appointee for the vacant seat of Mr. Layman. And so, since Ms. Duncan has been named, the second step in that is that she is to sign an officer's statement. Before she can take the oath of office and assume those duties, she's required to sign this officer's statement, which will be administered by Ms. Hopkins. And that's step two. And now that she has signed her officer's statement, she is required to, before she can enter the duties of the office, she shall take the official oath or affirmation of office, and that shall be administered also by Ms.
Okay, if you will raise your right hand. All right, and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee for San Angelo Independent School District of the State of Texas, until the best of my ability, deserve, protect, defend the Constitution and law of the United States and of this state. Well, help me God. Congratulations.
Pam?
She's about to be seated. I don't know if you're going to have a photo op or what you're going to do there.
Yeah, wait a second. Wait a second, Pam. I'm going to give you this choice. Do you want Mark to come up and have a photo?
Oh, he likes photos.
He likes photos. Come on up, Mark.
Okay, Mr. Parker and board members, I believe Ms. Hopkins is administering the oath of office to our newest trustee, Pam Duncan. So we are just incredibly excited about Pam's service to our district and want to honor her previous service to our district as an educator. I'm not certain if this was by design, they put an educator by me, just to make sure by proximity she keeps me doing what I need to do. So it's going to be certainly a blessing to have Pam Duncan, who's just well-respected in the community, not only as an educator, but as a person as well. And we just want to thank her family for for sharing her with us as well. I would be remiss if I didn't also, this is my 14th year in S A I S D, and I've been blessed to serve with a school board that has been unified, as Mr. Parker mentioned earlier, and made the best decisions possible for children. So it's been a great opportunity for us. And Lanny Lehman, I just want to say on record, has really been a mentor to me. And under his guidance, he has certainly mentored me to become a better leader, a better person, and a better father. So I just appreciate Lanny's service and his business acumen to our district and board, and always keeping children first in our community. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Parker, and we have a new voting member. So welcome, Ms. Duncan, and we're excited about your leadership and service to our district.
Before we go forward with the agenda, Pam, do you have anything? Want to make any comments?
Is it on? I would just say that I have spent a lot of time in prayer about this position. I take it with great excitement, and it's an honor. And I'll just do everything I can for the students, our children in this community, to give them the best that they deserve.
Thank you. All right. You'll kind of catch on to this as we go through it, okay? First thing on our agenda is we need to approve our minutes for our August 8, 2022 special finance pre-agenda meeting, and our August 15, 2022 regular board meeting, and our August 29, 2022 special meeting to adopt a budget. Do we hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Dendel, second by Mr. Gallegos on this agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next, as I mentioned in my comments when I welcomed everyone to the meeting, this is the time where we have public comments for topics not on the agenda at this meeting. I know that we've had one to sign up, Mr. Pacetti. And Mr. Pacetti, if you want to come forward. I know you know our rules. Speaking, you've been here several times before, but just be sure to make your comments in the microphone so we can hear you. Be sure to identify yourself, and then try to limit your comments to five minutes or less. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name's Virgil Pacetti, concerned dad. I wanted to address the board today. I know that you, you know, lost a member, a seasoned member today. And I've heard the story that you spoke of today from that particular individual about him coming to the board and being elected that, you know, to to find out what was going on here, doing some FOIA requests and those type things. And, you know, I hope that we don't start easing back into our past. Hopefully, we learn from the history of our past, because I've had to do some FOIA requests myself. Actually, the the latest one I had to do, because I was unable to find out, is actually I had to do a FOIA request to find out who my son's art teacher is. They actually only have one art teacher for 17 elementaries. I do have a FOIA request out for that. I met with Dr. I call him Dr. D, because I never get his name right. But we met on Friday, and Pam called me this morning and told me who his art teacher was, but also had some some FOIA request on when is this teacher available? What does she do? You know, if we only have one person split up on 17 campuses, which campuses get the most? Is it evenly divided? Does she need help? Recently, our Bowie Elementary had a PTO meeting, and they're trying to fire up that PTO meeting. And, you know, I've been kind of used to these type meetings where it's financial, political, those type things. That meeting was very different. It was a bunch of concerned parents, and they're worried about the boobash, the, you know, the library, the, you know, book fair, those type things. And there's a lot of people wanting to be, I think they're VIPs or something like that. It's some kind of volunteer process. You know, if we only have one art teacher for 17 elementaries, I really feel like you could reach out to these PTOs and say, look, we have a limited resource here, but, you know, she she or he would like to roll out these particular projects. Is there anybody willing to come forward and help roll it out in our school? You know, she can't come here, or he can't come here. But, you know, if you're certified through VIP and you have the time, you know, that way, each school has a fair chance of, you know, getting that art instruction. You know, if we have an executive director of art, it must be something that's important to the district, or we wouldn't have someone at that high of a level. So I would think that we'd be able to roll that out. One of the other things that I put in a FOIA request for, and I was told that it was denied, is actually put in a FOIA request to say which elementaries actually have a PTO, PTA, I don't know all the acronyms, and, you know, who's leading those. And I was told by the executive director of communications, we do not maintain a list of parent-teacher organizations or leader contact information, as these are not led by the district, but rather parent-initiated and with some campus connections. It is my understanding that all secondary schools have some form of parent-teacher organization or booster club. You know, part of having students engaged is having the parents engaged with them. I would hope that the district would want to know which schools have a PTO, and who are those leaders, because if you need to roll something out, it would be interesting to maybe go to those leaders and say, hey, look, we're going to be rolling this out to 17 elementaries. What are your thoughts? You know, we got Parker Hill here that are going to be discussing, you know, consolidate and replace. And, you know, consolidate can be a very touchy subject, especially if that particular elementary is very dear to that that community, that micro-community, or that PTO. So rather than just have some people come and tell us what we should do, we look, no parents are here, and we vote, and then roll it out, maybe we should reach out to those parents that have bothered to form a PTO and bothered to get elected and have a minor, you know, elected position, because they, you know, they don't want to be a board member, but they want to be involved and say, you know what, we want to pull all those PTO members in here and say, hey, look, guys, here's what's going on. What are your thoughts? So, you know, it does concern me that the district has no use to deal with those people, or even have a list, or know who those people are. So, you know, I'm reaching out to the board that maybe those are the type of people we should have a list of, and we should celebrate, and we should meet with, rather than just say, we don't know who they are, and we don't deal with them. So those are my comments today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacetti. I'm going to turn it over now to, there it is, Jason, about our facilities assessment report.
Thank you for having me here tonight. As we continue to assess our facilities, we have Alan Wolfe from Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper to walk us through parts of the assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Henry and board. Good to be with you all again this evening. Ms. Duncan, it's good to have you on the board as well. Congratulations. Wanted to go through, I know we talked about it at the the pre-meeting, but just some of the data that we've collected from the facility assessment and master planning process on the elementary schools. If you recall, we were here here in June to talk over the facility condition assessment, but we wanted to update you on items that were part of the next steps from that meeting, which was to consider, again, I'm Alan Wolfe with Park Hill, to consider some of the items and doouts that you had from that meeting. So just to kind of refresh where we are on the process and the schedule, we spent the spring working on the facility condition assessment, lots of field observation and analysis. And we're to the part now, we're trying to master plan, put together options for the different campuses for the elementary schools. Tonight, we wanted to just talk about, one of the the big next steps that you had for us in June was to examine the capacity and enrollment of each of the elementary schools. So we got a graphic to show you there. We'll summarize the facility assessment and review that again. We'll show you some results. We did have some planning with the with the cabinet, the administrative cabinet as well. Really got great input from them. And then we wanted to talk about a few metrics to consider as we go forward. The one that I wanted to show, this was one of the questions that the board had, what is the kind of the tenure enrollment history and versus the capacity in the district? So I've got three different graphs like this, and this is actually the 2012 enrollment that's shown in blue. There are a couple of vertical bars here. You can see what we have called the ideal capacity of an elementary at at 600 students. And again, that's something that's really part of our part of our practice and what we've seen around in different similar-sized districts. That doesn't mean that that's necessarily the that's certainly up to you guys, as we plan for what we want long-term with elementary schools. But we also show another vertical bar here in the middle. As you can see, the average enrollment for elementary schools in 2012 was 428 students. So if you look at the graphic horizontally, you can see blue is enrollment, and then the orange is what's the additional capacity in those campuses. We've also grouped it according to the elementaries, according to their feeder pattern. So you can see that Lincoln, Lincoln and Lakeview is up at the top, Lone Star Lone Star and Central is in the middle, and then Glenn and Central is shown below that. So I'd like to you, as you look, follow the orange and blue bars, if you will, and you can see the change in five years. A little bit of change for the average enrollment to 414 students now. And then as we move forward to current enrollment capacity, you can see that that average enrollment has dropped below 400, more in the 375 range. So as we look at that, there's a lot of additional capacity within the district. So the buildings are not full right now in terms of the the number of students enrolled. This graph is is kind of shows the same history over time, but it it's just a different way of communicating it. And you can see in terms of the long-term trends, right now, Bonham is one that has continued on a has an upward trend in terms of enrollment, but several of the campuses do not. And you can also see some have a steeper trend downward in terms of enrollment. And so as we look at the the different campuses, it's really important that we we kind of watch the the trends. And so you can see there's particularly with Goliad and San Jacinto, and also Bowie and Austin and Bradford as well, have some downward trend. So that was one one item as part of our scope of work. But recall, we also looked in June at the addition of the campuses. So there's the capacity and enrollment that affects your operational cost, but also costs needed as buildings age. And the facilities that we examined with a detailed focus in our condition assessment were those that were not part of the 2008 bond program. And so you can see, we went through, and and those indicated in red were systems that were critical need items for repair or renovation. Those in yellow were items to watch that were beginning to get to that point. And then the green items were those that were in in better condition. And so we went and looked at for all of these seven campuses here that were highlighted. And you can see it was everything from like the site utilities at Altaloma, all the way through interior construction, roofing, the HVAC. Well, so these were the items that were covered in detail in our June meeting. So what we're tasked with is putting all of this information and making recommendations to you about how we might move forward with a master plan for your elementary facilities. But we wanted to get some input from the administrators and the administrative cabinet. So we put all 17 attendance zones out and looked at looked at the boundaries of the attendance zones, but we also looked at the what we call geocoding the students, so we know where the density of and where the students are living as we're examining these different potential scenarios. This was just so we could get a better understanding of our of the capacity and enrollment at each of the campuses. You can see there's some similar information in what we showed last week. We also, you know, tried to to distill this information. It's helpful for us just to look at where was the available capacity and and what metrics are helpful for us as we analyze where the district might want to go long-term, because again, a master plan is looking into the future, five, 10 years at least. And so we wanted to take a look at the capacity and look at how that might relate to a what we might call an ideal-sized elementary school, or at least one that's more typical size. Typically, in in districts your size, elementary schools are between 450 or 500 students to 650 student elementary. But we wanted to examine what is the available capacity in the district as it relates to that particular metric. So just looking at the the eight schools with the most additional capacity currently, and looking at what the number of seats available, or if you will, than the available capacity, that's the equivalent of about three elementary schools, that's the equivalent of about three elementary schools, five hundred and eighty students each, if you want to think of it in terms of just elementary school sizes. Whereas the bottom half is more closely equivalent to two elementary schools of a little less than five hundred students. When you start to think about it that way, there are a lot of available capacity within the district as we're looking for elementary schools. And this is important because, you know, typically the operational cost of an elementary school could be two million to three million dollars, just ballpark terms. And so it's really important, both from the filling of the campus enrollment capacity, but also the cost impact. And if, also, when you start examining campuses, you have those costs with some of those older campuses for capital renewal, repair and renovation for the systems that we had analyzed during the facility condition assessment. I want to just talk really quick. We showed this graphic last week, and this is just statewide data from 2018. Only thing, this graphic is a little bit, little bit light colored, but the area around, this is basically, on the bottom scale is the number of students. And this is just for the purposes of illustrating that across the state, where that density of gray dots is, is the average campus size. And if you can look at that, whereas the average enrollment currently at San Angelo ISD is more in the three hundred and seventy to three hundred and eighty students, as we looked at earlier, a typical elementary school in Texas is going to be closer to that six hundred to seven hundred students, just by the density of the dots here. And again, this is just a big-picture graphic, but all of this to illustrate that the trend has been for elementary schools to be, to be a little bit larger than what, and serve more students than is currently, currently happening at San Angelo ISD. So I think, in our experience, I know with, with other districts of similar size, they have been in an ongoing process to try to get their campuses more to the six and seven hundred student size. So kind of leading to a recommendation and something that we'd like for the Board to, we would offer to the Board for its consideration. And I want to, before I get to that, I want to just say for throughout this process, when we're looking at master planning options, we want to keep the service to the student paramount. That's a charge that you guys gave us and we want to honor that. But we do want to try to help provide options that can better, better utilize existing campuses. We want to try to make sure that we're, school districts offer a variety, there are a variety of programs and special programs that you guys also provide. And we want to make sure that the master plan addresses the, the unique needs of each of those programs as well. So with all of that in mind, it would be our recommendation that the Board start to examine options that, that could help take, you have seventeen elementary schools currently, but to look at options to get to fourteen campuses or even twelve campuses long-term. And that could be through a variety of things. It could be consolidations, it could be repurposing of existing facilities and encompassing all of the programs and the, just, we got to see the students here earlier and how successful they were and really, really great to be here. But we want to make sure that, that we're helping as far as the elementary master plan so that the students continue to have success like you've seen. Any questions I could offer, could answer?
Some of this we've, Mr. Wolfe was here and presented part of this to us. I'm sure we're going to be seeing more from you and your, and your crew, and we appreciate you being here. These are things that we have to decide, and as Mr. Pasetti has already mentioned, these are things that once we get further down the road, we'll certainly have to visit with various campuses and parents and families in those communities if we're going to take any action on this because we're going to need the, the input and support of everyone in the community for this to, to work. But it's, it's interesting, as we've all been discussing, how our demographics have changed. For those of us that have been on the Board for several years right now, and I guess Gerard and I, the longest-serving now, it's, our enrollment was, was low and then it went up and then it started going down again, and these, these things change. So we appreciate you helping us to evaluate this. So just looking at whether anybody else has comments. If not, we, we appreciate you being here. Remind, remind everybody where you, where you live and where you're driving from each time.
Yes, sir. I'm in, I'm in Lubbock. We also have an office in, in Abilene and Midland as well, so, but I, I work out of Lubbock office.
Well, we appreciate you being here. You driving back tonight?
Yes, sir.
Well, be careful on your drive.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe.
And thank you for your staff. They've been very, very great and provided us all the information that we've needed.
Dr. Gomez, you, I think we have a special guest with us tonight.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Delof, and members of the Boards, we have two pieces on this evening's academic report. Earlier, we were honored to recognize several of our students and their gift in the area of academics. Our first portion of the academic update has another way we celebrate all the ways our students are smart. It's Hispanic Heritage Month. And so in this short video, you will see some of our dancers from Fort Concho Elementary and our mariachi group from Lakeview as they participated in the kickoff at City Hall. So we'll show you that first video and then we'll segue into our guest speaker this evening. He's our thought partner around community-based accountability, which you'll also hear, hear referred to as the benefits-based accountability system. But John is a thought partner to help us as we work in San Angelo ISD to lift up the hopes and dreams of our students and their families and celebrate all the ways they're smart, not just on a single test score. You can look up his website, Brave Ed, if you would like further information. But with that, John, the floor is yours. Y'all will help me by welcoming John Tanner.
Thanks. Mr. Parker, Dr. Delof, it's a pleasure to be back with you again. I've, I've been here a number of times over the years. In fact, I remember the former Board Member, Quiet Lanny, was always nice to me and used to give me trouble at meetings when I would come try to work with teachers. And so it's really nice that, it's really nice to be here. What, what FARA asked me to do in a short period of time is, is to really equip you as the Board to go out and talk about accountability in a way that is probably very different than what a lot of us think about. For those of you who don't know me, that's what I, my organization, all we do is study accountability. We, we look at how it affects the dynamics of organizations, and we are particularly interested in education because that's where the world that we, we come from. So in a few, just a handful of slides, if you have eight fingers, I'm going to show you, I think, some ways that you can talk about this as you go out and work with your stakeholders in a way that I think will be very helpful for the systems that you're building here. Slide one is just to remind ourselves what the word accountability really means because I think a lot of times we can forget sometimes the really simple things. There are two parts to the word. It's pretty straightforward, to be accountable and the Latin suffix ITY, which just refers to the quality state or degree of something. And people who are accountable, organizations that are accountable, or schools that are accountable, take on responsibility, they take on answerability, and they take on explicableity, the, the ability to be able to explain very clearly the things that we do. And when we have accountability systems in organizations that don't do these three things, it makes it very difficult to deal with accountability as a part of our leadership function and structure. That's slide one. Simple. Like I said, we're going to try to do this in eight pretty straightforward slides. Slide two is a little different. We want to make sure that we know how to talk about both the accountability that the state does and the accountability systems that we're trying to build that are good for communities, kids, and our stakeholders. There are only two big families of accountability that exist. And again, this is after years and years of research of trying to figure out how accountability works in hospitals, nonprofits, lots of different kinds of organizations, and of course, schools. Now we can define those two accountabilities in two words, a protectionist accountability and a benefits-based accountability. And you are all intimately familiar with both of these. None of these are new to any of you. Protectionist accountabilities are the accountabilities that we put in place to make sure that organizations don't do dumb things while they go about their day-to-day work. So we ask factories and mines not to pollute the atmosphere or the water. We have, all of you experienced protectionist accountability when you drove here today because everybody you encountered on the road just about has a driver's license. And that's a protection that says we should only let people on the road who have at least some amount of competence for being able to drive. Certifications, criminal background checks, all of these are excellent examples of protectionist accountabilities that we put in place that service very nicely in some narrow, focused, specific way. But just because we can pass a criminal background check does not also mean we're a good person. It doesn't mean we're an effective organization if everybody in the organization has passed a criminal background check. It means we don't have any former felons working in our organization. It's an enormous mistake when we somehow forget that effectiveness cannot be reflected in compliance. And one of the mistakes that certain organizations make in unhealthy organizations goes against this. In really healthy organizations that are designed to deliver benefit to stakeholders like a school, exactly as we saw with the kids earlier, exactly as we saw in the public comments earlier, is that when we're trying to be effective and deliver benefit, that has to eclipse everything else. And if that doesn't happen, then we're at risk of being in an organization that's not particularly good for the stakeholders it's designed to serve. And so the goal of accountability in any organization is to, is to address the compliance functions that always exist, but to make sure that they are eclipsed by the benefits that we're all trying to deliver to our stakeholders. No more, nowhere is that more true than in schools. But what we also know is that in unhealthy organizations, just the opposite happens, that the compliance function comes out front and then blows up, becomes the thing that we most focus on. And when that happens, organizations are in real trouble because now we're at risk of thinking that just because everyone passed a criminal background check, that we're a great school. We're at risk of thinking that just because everybody has a driver's license, they're good drivers. And you all drove here, and I would imagine you had some examples that suggest that's probably not entirely the case. This is how accountability functions in profoundly unhealthy organizations. And many of the business owners that we've spoken to across the country tell us that if their businesses were to focus in this kind of an accountability environment, they'd go under within six to nine months. This is not a very healthy way to be. Compliance can never become a substitute for effectiveness, or the organization will be lost. That's slide two. Slide three is that when compliance tries to substitute for effectiveness, we're going to be in a world of hurt. Unfortunately, this is a design issue. This isn't a philosophical issue, this isn't an opinion issue, this is in the design of what it means to deliver benefit to stakeholders versus what it means to be compliant with the requirement. Compliance and protectionist accountabilities create these basic, focused, narrow protections, and they're fine. Many of you probably worked in the food services industry when you were younger. Anybody remember taking the food service handler permit? Or no, food permit, I can't even say that right. You went and you took a test that said, "Do you know how to wash your hands? Do you pick chicken up off the floor and cook it? Or do you throw it away?" These very simple, basic things. These provide very specific, narrow protections, and they're reasonable and rational for the most part. Whereas benefits-based accountabilities are massive. I can know the benefits that San Angelo ISD exists to provide when I go to the parents and the kids and I say, "Tell me about your hopes and dreams. Tell me what benefits you expect by sending your child to our school." And they will give us profoundly clear answers. Make sure that kids can be creative, keep them safe, help them go deep, make sure they leave school prepared for the world that they're going to inherit. Benefits-based accountability is something that every one of you in your jobs as Board Members, outside your job as Board Members, I should say, deal with on a regular basis. You're constantly as a discipline of leadership asking, "What is it that my stakeholders most need of the organization?" But these result in very different actions. The actions in a compliance-based world ask you to repeat the past. Now, why do they do that? Well, the last time you were compliant with FERPA as a school, the last time you were compliant with the requirement meant that you avoided trouble. And the best way for you to avoid trouble going forward is to repeat whatever it is you did yesterday. And that's fine if we're talking about FERPA or a driver's license or something like that, but that would be a terrible thing to do when it comes to something as important as, say, literacy or numeracy, because the world is going to change out from underneath us and we're not going to be prepared to deal with it. Just the opposite is, is true in a benefits-based accountability. This world insists that you change. It insists that you innovate. It insists you find new ways to do the work that needs to be done because the old ways are simply not going to be relevant in two or three, four, or five years. It's also the case that the effects differ a great deal. The effect in a compliance-based, protectionist accountability, I love these words, ossify, petrify, you can pick the one that you want, but what it's going to do is it's going to take that piece of the organization that was compliant and freeze it. It's going to say, "Repeat the past, do the same thing over and over again." Again, fine if we're talking about compliance, but a really terrible thing if we're in the benefits-based world because that will prevent the benefits from actually occurring. In a benefits-based world, we have to insist and empower the organization to change, to innovate, to do things differently than it did in the past, to change in ways that are deeply meaningful. So this isn't a, "Gosh, it would be nice if," or, "Wow, what an interesting theory, John." This is in the actual design behind these two terms, behind the idea of a protection and compliance and the idea of a benefit and being effective regarding it. This statement below, "Compliance cannot equal effectiveness," I cannot tell you how many times we've seen organizations and investigated organizations that made this mistake and how almost every single one of them is no longer in existence. This is just simply the, one of the worst things that we can do to an organization. I want to point out in slide four that organizations and professions really are brought to ruin when we insist that compliance substitute for effectiveness. I'll use medical field, Mr. Kingman knows that world pretty well. Here's how I could ruin the medical profession. I could suggest to the world that if seventy-five percent of the patients of a doctor do not improve, you lose your license. I will just, I will absolutely ruin medicine if that's something that I do. Now, let's say that I did research, and my organization does research, and I discovered that in fact, that's a pretty reasonable threshold. Research and common sense would suggest I go look at the doctors that are above it and figure out what they're doing, and I look at the doctors below it and figure out what they're not doing. And with that information, we can improve, we can find best practice. But what that would also require us to do is to interpret, because some doctors would be above it and be there by absolute luck, not because they're effective. Some doctors would be below it, not because they're failures, but because they're serving a particular population and doing a fine job in it. What happens when we convert good research to compliance gets us into trouble. Reason number one is that you will lose the opportunity to see best practice. Think about how dangerous that would be in the world of medicine. If all of a sudden overnight, we could no longer determine what the healthiest path forward was, but in fact, things that are not healthy for us and bad for us suddenly come to stand in as best practice. So again, I'll use Dr. Kingman. He sees all the patients that walk in, he does a great job, a fine job, he is below the threshold, he loses his license to practice medicine. I cherry pick patients. I only take those who are likely to improve under my care. I remain a doctor. My practice is now inserted in as a potential best practice when it is in fact, a harmful practice to the field. practice to the field and the profession. Whereas, the practice that truly is helpful to the field and profession is now dismissed. Best practice, when it gets confused in organizations, is troublesome. This is the first thing that will happen if we try to substitute compliance for effectiveness. The second thing, and one I find particularly pernicious, is that the patients switch from being the reason that we exist as medical professions and become potential liabilities to our job. We know that because they can walk in the door and we can handicap the patient in terms of their contribution to our judgment. Is this patient likely to help John keep his job, or is this patient highly likely to hurt John's ability to keep his job? And while I don't know of a single medical profession, professional who in that world would allow that to affect their care, just the simple fact that the question exists means that we've done something that's not particularly helpful. Patients are not supposed to be pawns or potential liabilities, they're supposed to be our stakeholders and the reason that we exist. There are a lot of problems that come with doing this, I've mentioned three here, very quickly, if no problem existed before. If this were just some policymaker that said, "Wow, I just think people deserve to be protected from bad doctors," and they put this into place, they will invent the very problem that they said they wanted to solve. Now, think about that for a minute. I want to make sure that all patients can see an effective doctor, have effective care, and have the best possible outcome. And so, therefore, I'll put a 75% threshold on it, because that's what research tells me is a good thing to do. What I just did is I invented the problem, because now I can't identify best practice, or best practice becomes confusing. It becomes indefensible. It's difficult for me to say what I did is best practice if I don't meet the threshold and did all the things that I was supposed to. If a problem did exist, you will have given up your chance to fix it. You can't fix it from within this accountability environment. And so, again, back to the CEO that we, one of the CEOs we've met with on this, his comment to me was, what would be so terrible about this becoming the accountability, my organizational accountability, is that I now have a problem, and I'd be fired because I wouldn't be able to fix it, nor would anybody else. And that would be a horrible situation for an organization to be in, which is what we did to schools. This is what the accountability environment that we have been asked to work in in schools has been for the last 20, well, 30 years here in Texas. I don't believe this was intentional. I mean, I've looked very carefully at the words and the reasons that policymakers were trying to do things. There were genuine reasons for them to do what they did. But what we now do is we say, "Some percentage of your kids needs to get a high test score, graduate, whatever it happens to be, comply with a formula that we have in our heads." What we do is we make the educational best practice unrecognizable and indefensible. Think about a school that the state says, "You are a nef school." How hard is that for that principal to stand up and say, "Here is where we're being really effective." The world doesn't believe it, because the world looks at them as a failure, not as someone who is doing things that are worthwhile or good. Imagine turning students into potential liabilities. Imagine a world where a student could walk into our buildings, and we know based on their demographics whether they're likely to contribute to our accountability rating or take away from it. Well, I just described today, because every one of us know if a subdivision gets built in our school, if we know what the median price of a home is in that subdivision, we know whether that subdivision is going to help our accountability rating or hurt it. And if that isn't converting kids to potential liabilities, I don't know what is. The last statement remains the same. The current educational accountability system, a compliance-based system, well-intentioned though it was, is not designed in any way, shape, or form to help organizations change, improve, innovate, do all the things that are important for us to do, do all the things that I continuously hear you guys talk about in other districts across the state. It's designed to actually prevent it. So again, the lesson, compliance does not equal effectiveness, and our organizations get in big trouble when we make the mistake of thinking that they do. Slide five, let me give you a very real-world example. You, as board members, each get to go out and defend a benefits-based accountability, what we call in Texas, our community-based accountability systems, and we want you to be able to do that. Here is the example that we use that we think makes the argument clearer than anything else. Think about graduation rate. We all know what a graduation rate is. It's somewhere between zero to 100%. We can imagine that graduation rate consisting of two groups of kids. One group of kids are going to graduate from high school no matter the school they attend. It wouldn't matter if they attended that high school that the state says is the worst in the state, those kids are going to graduate. We know who those kids are. We have another group of kids who are highly likely not to graduate. They're at risk for a whole bunch of different reasons. And we can imagine a high school that, given its demographic, I live in San Antonio, we have one up the street from me, where all of those kids are highly likely to graduate no matter the school they attend to. Median price of a house is about $550,000. So, those kids are graduating in that school or any other school. We could disband the school, we could fire all the teachers, we could do anything we wanted, those kids are still going to graduate. And so, graduation rate actually doesn't mean anything in that school, it's a pointless statistic. It's happening in spite of the school and the people in it, not because of it. That doesn't mean it's a bad school. It means that this is not a useful metric for that school. I can imagine another school, and I have the school in mind, I know this school, it's a high school in a very poor town in Mississippi, 85% graduation rate, but most of the kids in the school are at serious risk of not being able to graduate. And the school, through an incredible amount of effort and energy and commitment, get a large number of those kids across the stage every year. And so, there are a lot of truths in this situation. And if I have the truth, if I have a benefits-based perspective, which is a benefit that every child expects when they come to us is to be able to walk across the graduation stage, that school A isn't adding much, not a criticism, fact. School B is adding a lot. They need to keep at the things that they're doing well, but we need to be honest that we're missing 15% of our kids, and no one would consider that acceptable. So, what capacities can we add to go after those kids? But to label them a failure would be unethical, immoral, because now we're at risk of saying, "You're a complete failure." Change everything. Everything is, you're clearly bad at your jobs, you're clearly, don't have a clue what you're doing. School B probably has some lessons for us to learn. If I'm school A, and a new group of kids move in who are highly likely not to graduate from high school, I need to go look at school B for potential lessons, not the other way around. School A has nothing to teach school B, except if you had kids that demographically looked like ours, you'd do better. That's not a lesson for anybody to learn. This benefits-based lens is what we have to create here in San Angelo, and what we do all over the country. Because when we create this lens and we have the truth, everything gets better. When we have the truth, the whole system gets better, all children are better served, all communities are better served, which is not what happens in a compliance-based world where we say, "If you don't reach some threshold for graduation rates, you fail. You're a terrible school." Because then we'd be at risk of saying to school B, "You're terrible at everything. Change it all, get rid of it. School A, you do a great job, you're the model for how to graduate kids." That's false. That's just not true. And what happens in compliance-based worlds is that the truth goes away. And when that happens, you as a board, as a community, as a set of schools, do not have the information that you need in order to make the improvements that need to be made. This would be an absolutely terrible thing to happen. Compliance and effectiveness are just not the same thing. Slide six, benefits are surprisingly powerful. One of the things that I hear when I work with boards all across the country is I hear the language that you use. I hear the language that you use about your own organizations, I hear the language that you use about schools. And it's this language that we call benefits-based language. What's amazing about the benefits an organization exists to provide is the perspective of who gets to say what those benefits are. It's not those of us in the technical organizations. You can imagine a non-technical person in a highly technical organization. And in order to have a meaningful conversation between the two of them, you cannot start in the technical side, because we will all be lost. What you do instead, and every one of you in your professions does this, is you walk towards your stakeholder until you find an equally meaningful moment. And that equally meaningful moment is a moment that allows you to communicate and say the exact same thing, even though you come at things from profoundly different perspectives. This is really important to understand, because when you begin accountability deep in the technical, nobody can understand. I don't know what this means, I do now that I have had an experience, I can't even say two of those words. But if someone came to me and said, "John, I'm accountable for this, or I need you to under..." There's no way, without a medical degree, that I can understand what those terms mean. I can't even say them. But when you tell me that I've got a detached retina, I can start to get a little bit serious. I understand now that this is something that probably needs to be taken care of. But the level of benefit comes when someone says, "Your eyesight is at risk," because now I have a complete understanding, as much as I can, from a non-technical perspective of the problem, and I can go to a medical profession, professional, and they can deliver a benefit, even though we have profoundly different perspectives on this. What is even more remarkable is the amount of trust that gets generated when we talk of benefits, because I can pluck that information up, I can take it to get a second opinion, not knowing anything about what it actually means. And another doctor, if I say to them, "I need to understand whether this course of action will deliver the benefit I need," I can begin to build trust in technical organizations I can't possibly understand. And as I do that, it empowers me as a stakeholder of the organization, but it empowers the organization to know that they're accounting for things in a helpful and a meaningful way. What we know is that all accountability systems that begin in the data, flinging reams of data out to the world, as if somehow that will make sense, have terrible accountability systems, because it's like a Rorschach blot to most of the public. I would argue that when we take reams of test data, or even graduation rates, as I showed you in a very simple example, and fling it out to the public, there's no way that the public can make sense of it and understand whether we're doing our jobs or being effective. Even the day-to-day work is technical, even planning is wildly technical. And when we try to begin our accountabilities there, especially our organizational accountabilities, we lose everybody. What we need to know, as a stakeholder of an organization, whether it's of one of our members of our community in our schools, whether it's the stakeholder that each of you have in the organizations that you work with, is what are the benefits that we expect from an organization. My last slide. Every profession is therefore defined through the benefit, through the number of benefits that they exist to provide. I want to say that again, I think that didn't come out quite right. Every profession, every organization is defined through a finite list of benefits that they exist to provide. If you're a hospital, if you're a nonprofit, if you're a church, every organization is designed to deliver some number of benefits, but they also don't deliver most of the other benefits that exist in the world. So, the hospital, there we've got improved health, decreased pain, but they don't put out fires. That's the job of a fire station. Fire stations put out fires, they deliver great emergency care when they can, but they don't get kids ready for their futures. That, of course, is what we do in schools. We do a lot of other things in schools. We provide safe learning spaces, we do a lot of things that are critically important. And here's what we have discovered in our research, is that this is not some terribly complex world. There are about 30 benefits that over and over again, organizations or parents have identified as being important in the educational process for kids. Not one of them is a surprise. I guarantee you that in about an hour, you would come up with 90% of them. We want a safe, conducive learning space. Go deep with our kids, don't bore them. Make sure they've got great adults in their lives, get them ready for their lives, make sure they're ready for whatever comes next. All of, creativity is always there, which I applies tonight. All of these benefits are, represent the level at which we, as a school system, need to account to our stakeholders, count for to our stakeholders, so that they have a clear understanding regarding those benefits of where we're effective and where we're not. And so, when we talk about benefits-based accountability, when we talk about the community-based accountability systems you are creating, what these slides hopefully do is create a rationale for why we're doing this. Right now, we're stuck very much in a compliance-based accountability environment, and you are faced with that compliance-based accountability environment every day. What's being built is a benefits-based accountability environment that can eclipse, I would make a silly joke and say, two-handed situation, but that's not very funny, but it is funny and I can laugh about it. But what we want to be very clear about is, we're trying to build a system here in San Angelo that is a benefits-based system that will eclipse what the state's doing. We're not asking the state system to go away, we're not suggesting that it should. What we are suggesting is that the citizens here in San Angelo need to understand where each campus is being effective at delivering benefit, where it has work to do, and where it has work to do, what's being done. And I would argue that as they gather that information, that's the key step to making sure that compliance no longer substitutes for effectiveness. These slides are available to you. I will love to answer questions, I want to be very careful with time, obviously, but we want to make these slides available to you, so that if you need these to use to help explain to others, we want you to have them, we'll simplify them further if we need to, but we want to make sure that each of you as a board member are able to make the argument to your publics as to why we're building a community-based accountability system here. And it isn't because we hate what the state's doing, we're not going to be negative about any of that. We're doing it because everybody in San Angelo deserves to know what benefits we're being effective at delivering and where we have work to do. And we do that for our stakeholders. That's the way that we can begin to build trust, that's the way that we can begin to partner, that's the way that it can strengthen communities, families, and so on and so forth. Are there any questions? I'm looking at Farah to see if, I'll let you tell me to be quiet and move on.
Sorry. Can you go back to slide five? Do you mind going back to slide five? Sorry, I know it's a lot of clicks back there.
I've only done this once.
Yeah, right there, that's fine, yeah. So, I think, just, I guess, one point I want to make, just because obviously, community-based accountability or benefits-based accountability is something that our public does ask, like, "What are we doing? Why are we doing this, et cetera?" It's not that we are afraid of being judged, I mean, or any of those things. We want to have effective schools, we want a graduation rate to be 97%, but what I want the public to hear is that although we want that 97%, we want to understand why we're not there on this slide. It's not that we're trying to undo the fact that we find it unacceptable that we are not where we should be, it's that we want to, we want to understand the root cause of why we're not where we are and have, that way so we can build partnerships with the community to get to the place where the entire community desires for us to be.
You said that perfectly. I mean, the reason that we use high school is because this is, this is one that most of the public thinks they understand, but in this example, it shows very clearly that we go one level below the surface and get to the truth, and suddenly, we can make everything better. If the threshold needs to be 97%, fine. We're not suggesting that you can't have thresholds, goals, objectives, and so on. But what we are suggesting is that don't, you can't put a compliance piece on it and say, "Effective or failure," because that falsifies what's actually happening. And if you act on false information, you make everything worse. If you said, "School B, your model is school A, go talk to them," that's pointless and a waste of time. If you said, "School B is doing nothing good, eject it all, get rid of it, fire all the teachers, fire the principal, you know, let's get other people in there," well, that's not helping the situation, in fact, it's making the situation worse. So, absolutely, we should never shy away from high expectations, thresholds, and this isn't doing that. What this is doing is giving us the truth that we need in order to get there as fast as we possibly can. The only way to slow it down is with the falsehoods of saying, "You're a compliant school, therefore, you're effective. You're a non-compliant school, therefore, you're ineffective," and hiding what we know to be the truth. You said it really well. Other?
John, we use our... Effectively, when we see schools that are struggling, and we find that, even though there may be a great attached to that, we find tidbits of information that can help us improve that student population base, those kids in that particular area, whatever it is, but those tidbits we find in the compliance issue do help us become better in the long run, because we see things that are troubling in kids, and we can help reach back and find that group and then bring them forward. Maybe, we may not ever reach the goal of the percentage that we want to be at 100%, but that's not, that's not, we don't quit trying. You know, our goal is to be the best school we can be for every kid, not just kids that are automatically successful, so.
I like how you said that, and again, the example here is always a good one. The way to guarantee that you'll never get there is to act on falsehoods. The way to give yourself a consistent, constant, eternal chance that you will is to act on the truth. And that's the thing I think, I find so frustrating about so many of the schools that serve children in economically disadvantaged environments, is that we're constantly saying to them, "You fail." And what we're doing is we're preventing them from having the truth, so that they can actually... actually get better and improve. We're creating the very problem that those who put a compliance-based system in place and say genuinely and honestly they want to solve, but they've given us a system that isn't capable of solving it. And the beauty of what they did is it's such a small system, such a small piece, that if we build a benefits-based system alongside it, we're not doing anything unethical and illegal at all. What we're doing is giving all the kids and all the schools a chance. And so again, we don't have to have a policy change for this to work, but I liked what you said. We have to have the truth in order to make things better.
Any other questions, comments? How many years have you been visiting with us, John? How many-- I know it's, you know--
Six. I was first out here five years ago to visit, and it's been a fascinating time. I mean, I'm a researcher, and that's the work that I do, and we've always done our work in partnership with school systems. We've never gone out and done it in an isolated way. And so when I first came here, it was a very laborious process for us to put these things in place. And what we've learned over five years, you know, I could date myself and say how to name that tune in, you know, a lot fewer notes, but that's really what we've learned over the last five years since we started coming here. We had a wonderful group here who believed in the principles that we were talking about, and I think where we've advanced is in our ability to now put these systems into place in a very condensed period of time and in a way that's much more meaningful to the schools industry. So you guys got to be one of the early adopters, and I'll be honest, in the books I've written and the things I've done, you guys have taken front and center on a lot of the things that you've done. You guys have really done a nice job embracing this work and trying to move on, and now it's time to build the systems that will really bring it all to light.
Well, we appreciate all your help. You know, I remember many of the board team-- we heard you speak at a school board convention, and I think that's how we invited you out. But we know that you-- you know, for those that are just watching this, that you are helping school districts, not just in the state of Texas, but all over the country and that other school districts all over the country are dealing with this same thing. It's just, you know, state legislatures and state boards of education want to do their best to have some way to evaluate schools and what schools are doing, but it's very difficult, as you're saying, to use a cookie cutter approach and just say, one size fits all, and here's the number you have to-- you get, and that means one school district's doing well achieving that, some not, just like you explained. And we're trying to do our best to follow your approach, that we do the best for every child, that every student, the low-- those that come in low performing, we do the best to get them to the highs we can, and those that come in high performing, we don't just say, here's the target for you. We try to make sure they're improving and doing their very best also. And that-- when you do that, you can't just have a one-size, as you said, one-size-fits-all and just say, here's the approach. We're going to have this many people graduating, and if we do, we're a great school, and if we don't, we're done. So you've helped us learn that. I doubt-- seriously, you said you're going to leave the slides, and I appreciate you doing it. I know good and well, I can't give this presentation to the Rotary Club like you would, and I may need the simplified approach, but I do know that every time I hear you talk, I learn a little bit more about it. So I appreciate you taking time to come here. You live in San Antonio, is that correct? Are you driving it back also?
Too many deer. No, I'll stay the night.
Okay. Well, good for you. That's right. You do understand that.
I've done this often enough. I'll keep my car intact, so I think I'll--
All right. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Well, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it very much.
Okay. We'll continue on with our agenda. Dr. McFarland, student enrollment report. Oh, there he is.
Yes, sir. The student enrollment report is from Tuesday, September 6th, which was the third Tuesday of this school year. And at that enrollment report date, we had 6,331 elementary students, 3,037 middle school students, and 4,214 high school students for a total enrollment for the district on the third Tuesday of this school year of 13,637. And if you compare to the third Tuesday of last school year at this time, that is down by 166 students.
Remind me, when we were setting up our budget, how many students were you basing the budget on?
Right around 600-- or 13,600.
Okay, so we're on target.
Yes, sir.
Well, good for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I understand we don't have a report with the Good Fellow Partnership this week, and so we'll go on to our consent items. We need to consider consent items A through J. A is consider approval of the quarterly investment report ending August 31, 2022. B, consider approval of the annual portfolio report ending August 31, 2022. C, consider bid 22-014 first aid, nursing, and athletic training supplies. D, consider bid 22-015 carpeted installation. E, consider bid 22-016 paper towels and toilet tissue. F, consider bid 20-014 curriculum and instruction materials. G, consider superintendent's recommendation for personnel for school year 2022, 2023. And I know we have a teacher that's-- we have on our desk. You have something to mention about that?
Yes, sir. We added an addendum this morning, or this afternoon, to your desk of one employee.
Right here. I appreciate that. Thank you. Consider-- H, consider class-sized waivers for 2022-2023. I, consider extracurricular status of the 4-H organization adjunct faculty agreement of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, Tom Green County. And J, consider approval of physical education program. All of these items we discussed last week at our pre-agenda meeting and cited we didn't need any further discussion, put them on a consent item. Does anyone need to remove anything from the consent item? And as Dr. Skelton has mentioned, last week, we didn't have anything to add to the consider superintendent's recommendation for personnel, and we do have that one person that he has added as an addendum that's on our desk tonight. So with that said, does anyone have a motion to make?
Move to approve consent items A through J.
And I'll second that item. So we have a motion by Mr. Dendel, second by Mr. Parker, to approve consent items A through J. Did somebody make a second? And I missed it? Were you trying?
I was trying.
I will defer. Second by Lupita-- Mizaroya made the second, and I'm happy for her to have that. I just didn't hear it. So, all right. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. And now we need to consider bills, accounts, and financial statements.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills, accounts, and financial statements of August 2022. As a reminder, we discussed all of these at our pre-agenda meeting, and if you go to our website, saisd.org, under financial transparency, you can see all of these statements, including our check register for the month of August for anyone to see. But other than that, I'm making a motion to approve bills, accounts, and financial statements for August of 2022.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We have a motion by Dr. Kingman, a second by Mr. Gallegos, to approve this agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. I think Dr. Detloff has an announcement he wanted to make.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, members of the board, on your agenda item, on number 12, the item that was just approved, we see the name Dr. George McFarland on this agenda item. Tonight is Dr. McFarland's last board meeting as a public educator in the state of Texas after more than 30 years of service, including the last three years with SAISD. So I just want to recognize and honor Dr. McFarland for his work as a teacher, coach, principal, superintendent, CFO in multiple school districts across Texas, and his ability to impact children across many levels and many areas. So we honor Dr. McFarland this evening. We held a reception this morning to celebrate his work and honor his commitment to public schools in Texas as well, and we wish him extremely well in his future endeavors. We also know that Dr. McFarland came into SAISD at a very unique time. It was early March 2020. So he had about three days of normalcy, and then we all know what happened in March 2020 with the pandemic. And so I know that he is proud, and I am proud of his efforts to serve through that pandemic. We know the individuals are still impacted by COVID, but we are certainly in the final quarters of the pandemic where we have learned to live with it and adjust to the new norms. So I just want to appreciate Dr. McFarland. He has got us in a very conservative fiscal position in our school district and has navigated and have been a great steward of the taxpayer and the dollars that come into our school system. So thank you for setting us on the road to success, Dr. McFarland, and we appreciate your service to not only our community, but Texas schoolchildren as well.
you can make your comments. I just want to relate to you. Try to limit your comments to a 60 minutes or less. Thank you, Dr. McFarland. I know I speak for the whole board team. You've been great to work with, and we appreciate you and wish you well. What are your plans?
So I'm making a transition. I'm going to work as a consultant for an organization called Southern Regional Education Board, and I'll be working as a school improvement coach and continue to help public--
my recollection, you took over for Dr. Jeff Bright, correct?
Correct.
And now Dr. Jeff Bright's going to take over for you. Is that right? At our-- Dr. Jeff Bright was with us-- how long were you with us, Dr. Bright? Seventeen years, and he was always pretty good at predicting things, and he predicted the COVID, and he decided he's going to get out, turn it over to you, let you have that-- those couple, three years, and then now he's back for-- and we appreciate you for, Dr. Bright, announcing that you'll be with 17 more years. So that-- we do appreciate Jeff stepping in to help us with this until we have an opportunity to try to find the best person we can to fill in, hopefully for the next 17 years. And it's-- but we're very fortunate that we had George to help us when Jeff was leaving, and we're now very fortunate to have Jeff to come back to help us while we're looking. Come on up, Dr. Bright.
I don't think I'd ever do this again. But, you know, people say that you want to leave things better than you found it. I can assure you, based on what I've seen, Dr. McFarland has left this place in a better position than when he found it. I would say where we're sitting right now is probably, from a cash basis, is the best position this district's ever been in. And so I attribute that to him, and he's going to be missed.
Well, I appreciate Dr. Bright. Like I've told everybody, is that he walked in-- when he walked in the building to help take my place and help fill in, he immediately knew more about the district than I knew with his experience. So y'all were in great hands for a little while. No more than two months.
Well, I was going to say that. There is no comment on that. That's it. Okay. Jason Henry, you have item 13, the last item on our agenda tonight.
Thank y'all for having me here tonight. Tonight, I bring forward bid 22-021, safety and security audit. The current three-year school district safety and security audit cycle for school districts began on November 1st, 2020, and will end on August 31st, 2023. School district safety and security audits are required by Texas Education Code 37.0-- or I'm sorry, 37.108. Must be completed during that cycle. Districts are required to report specific audit results to the Texas School Safety Center by September 15th, 2023. Bid specifications were developed for companies to assist in completing the Texas School Safety Center Audit Tool. Five vendors responded to this bid. All companies submitted resumes of their audit teams, and Crux Technology and Security Solutions not only had the lowest price, but also presented a team that demonstrated the knowledge for conducting a comprehensive review of school and district facilities and operations. Just to remind you, Crux is the company that not only have they worked with us in the past, they did a previous security assessment when we worked with Huckabee during our previous facility assessment. They also oversaw our camera project that added over 1,000 cameras to the school district, and they're currently working on plans for our lockdown system of our doors. The administration recommends for Crux Technology and Security Solutions of Fort Worth to conduct the Texas School Safety Center School Safety and Security Audit. Y'all have any questions over any of that?
And just for clarification, Mr. Henry, we did a security audit in 2019 as well, correct?
Correct. It would have been completed in 19 and then had to be turned in in 20.
So although this is towards the end of the cycle for this, the reason we're doing it towards the end of the cycle is we had just completed one in 2019, 2020.
Correct.
Thank you.
Also, Ms. Henry, we have significant history with Crux in working with them and moving our security plans forward for maybe even more than four years?
Five years, I'm going to say. They've been-- I've been working with them since I've been here, so it's been five years.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. This is something we have to vote on. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
I'll make the motion to approve the Crux Technology Security Solutions of Fort Worth to conduct the Texas School Safety Center School Safety and Security Audit.
Have a motion by Mr. Gallegos, a second by Mr. Dendel, to approve this agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right. That completes our agenda items. Dr. Detloff said we need to go into executive session for just a few minutes under Texas Government Code 551.072 Real Estate and 551.074 Personnel. So we'll be back in a few minutes. All right. We're back from executive session. We didn't take any votes, and we didn't take any action. Just have these announcements. We'll be going to the TASTA-TASB annual convention on Thursday, coming back on Saturday. It's in San Antonio. And then our finance pre-agenda workshop is October 11th, and our regular board meeting will be October 17th. And with that, I'm going to adjourn our meeting. I appreciate everyone for being here. Thank you.